Okay, so we stand for a prayer and then remain standing for a pledge. Praise God, Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, and we thank you again for your many, many blessings. Again, we ask you to be with our first responders. We ask you to put a hand over them and protect them. Our law enforcement, Lord, we ask you to be with our employees of the courthouse, all of our county employees. Lord, we just lift them up to you. We ask that you'll protect them and watch over them. Now, Lord, be with their meeting here today and just, Lord, help us to make the right decisions as we go forth. And we ask this in Jesus' name, and we give you the glory.
Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated, thank you. We call a meeting, Lord. Thank you all for coming. This is a work session, and it's, Dr. Kerros, I don't know if any of you have met her. She requested this be well. President of the Amos Society requested a meeting, and this is the only time she can be here, that's why it's such a long.
Yeah, I am sorry about that.
Oh, there we go, Lauren. So, you have the floor?
Yeah, so Catherine Kerros, a lot of people call me Dr. Kirby as well, so you might hear that along the way, because my nickname is Kirby. I, yeah, thank you for calling this meeting a little bit late, because unfortunately I work too much. So I'm leaving after this to a banquet and then to go back home and work. But I called this to ask, basically, present a proposal for assistance, monetary assistance, not to pay myself money, but to provide myself time. And what I mean by that is that with monetary assistance to WVU Emergency Medicine, Department of Emergency Medicine, I could have additional, what's called buydown, which is basically where my clinical shift load, so working in the actual ER, decreases, but I take that time and I'm able to invest it into my other endeavors, which in this case would be into Mineral County Medical Director requirements and things. The reason I want to do that is because historically in the past, Mineral County has not, from what I'm aware of, and if I'm incorrect, let me know, but historically what I've heard is that Mineral County has not had a medical director who has been involved with the medics in pretty much any way, shape, or form, other than to sign off on paperwork.
That is true.
So there's been very little direction, daily involvement with medics, quality assurance, protocol review, in-person or remote education or training. There's been no real quality, we, I call it QI review, et cetera, things like that, and no follow-up on how medics are doing, or even just personal communication and connection with our medics where they feel supported by me as a medical director or whomever's in that role. So to do that, however, would require much more extensive time for me to come down here and travel and to be present. But I think it's extremely important for the future of Mineral County Pre-Hospital Medicine to get, for me to get involved further, which I've already in the last several months started to do and have been receiving a lot of positive feedback from, from our paramedics, from our EMT, B-Basics in Advance, as well as from other agencies such as Valley, whom I'm not the medical director for. However, there's a large overlap in the volunteer services who also then tend to work at Valley. So I have spent some time there as well, just so that I can get involved more frequently. So that's why I asked for this meeting. Currently, the medical director's salary in Mineral County is $10,000, which does not provide any significant buydown for me in terms of time to come down and do these things and have more responsibility. So overall, pretty much my request is that this, this time and extensive effort that I want to put in equates to a much more substantial increase in my commitment here. And to do that, I would really need to have less clinical load in Morgantown. So just a little bit of background for WVU EMS, so Emergency Medical Services Pre-Hospital Medicine. It's a division of our full emergency department, which is run by Chris Gude, that's my chair. The head of the EMS division is Dr. F. S. Martin, who's the state director for all of EMS pre-hospital medicine for West Virginia Office of EMS. There are our four core faculty members who I talked about already, with Dr. Martin, Dr. Shider, Dr. Shukis. So and then myself would be included here. And then on top of that, we have additional medical directors in our counties who run through WVU EMS. Right now, like we talked about, the total compensation for medical direction here just does not reflect the desired roles and responsibilities that I want to have for the county. So what I, what we can do, and on this page, there's a lot of very, I'll say, medical jargon here, right? So I highlighted some of the ones that I wanted to talk about that I really felt I could provide to Mineral County going through. So I won't read every bullet point here, because I think that's a little excessive at this point. But things that I think were extremely important that we can continue with, the first would be protocol review and revision. This is under your R bullet point with my recommendation. So protocol review and revision, and statewide protocol formulary reviews and updates. So this was a huge change. We recently just put out brand-new protocols for all of our, our medics and EMT and EMS providers. Drastic change in what we now allow providers to do and have autonomy over. In the past, there was very little autonomy. People had to ask for permission from a medical command physician, such as myself, over the phone in real time, which I, you know, I'm not sure if any of you have ever been involved in any pre-hospital medicine in terms of fire EMS. But when you're on a call and someone is very sick, and you know what you're supposed to do and how to do it, but you're not allowed to do it, is one of the worst feelings in the world. You're sitting there, and you have to wait for someone to answer the phone when you know exactly what you're supposed to do. And that was really distressing to our medics and our EMS personnel, so we revamped the whole thing. These just came out. There are extensive revisions and additions. Our providers now have much more autonomy and are able to go forth and practice the way they should with consistent education and training. And that's what I want to make sure I'm providing, coming down and continuing to review protocols, to answer questions about things that might be confusing, to come and give hands-on training for anything that may be unclear or that people just want to know more about. We have a lot of really excellent medics here, which Mineral County is, it's a special place. It's different in that I think right now we're probably the only true volunteer service for the nine agencies. Yeah, and that's unheard of, like completely unheard of anywhere else in the state. And not only are we volunteer, we have medics who want to grow and learn, are excellent at what they're doing. And they keep asking me, "Dr. Kerros, can we do this? Dr. Kerros, can we learn that?" And I would love to provide additional education for this, so that we can even maybe, for future protocols, add things in that aren't there, add in the ability to place a breathing tube in somebody on scene who may need it, who's suffering instead of waiting for them to get to the hospital and unfortunately having them arrest or die because we couldn't do it. Right? If I could come down and provide that education and initiate pathways and protocols like that, that could be, provide huge implications for our county in saving community members' lives. One initiative that we're working on right now, actually Lawrence Trentor and Chris Green are helping to lead this charge, is to try to get full blood. So what that means is that when people are on scene of, say, like a car accident, so for instance, Cam Duncan recently, right? And their blood pressure is very low because they might be bleeding. We, at this point in time, are not allowed to give a blood transfusion, right? We're not trained to do that just yet. We have exceptions in rare circumstances like Cam's. But from, from that incident, what spurred on is that myself, as well as Dr. Jimmy Shider, we really want to initiate creating a program so that our medics can be trained to do that. And again, in a place like this, where maybe you're in Burlington, and there's a windy road, and it's going to take 40 minutes to get to a hospital. That's, that's the difference between someone living and dying. And that's the difference in saving people from Mineral County. So I feel like, in order to do that though, right, I'd have to come down, we have to set up these programs. We are working on doing this already, though. This has training coming up. We just spoke with the blood banks at Ruby, and we're going to speak with the blood banks at Berkeley, and hopefully really get this on the road. So this is one of these things. So I'm continuing to like look to push forward our care here, so that we can better, better help people in this community. So that's one of the main ones. Another thing that I'm really getting involved in is that in the past, I don't think our providers felt supported. If something went wrong on a call, instead of feeling like they could call the medical director for guidance, support, it was kind of more of a fear to call forward, for fear of getting in trouble or having negative consequences. And that's not what I'm here to do. We're not here to crucify people who are doing the best they can to try to save people's lives. That's how you lose medics. That's how you lose providers. No one wants to work in that environment, right? So recently, we did have a very young medic who had a really difficult call. And the person ended up not surviving. It was Catherine. She was very distraught over this, just to get her to talk to me on the phone. It was, it was upsetting to me that she felt so afraid to call and talk to me to ask for my help, because in the past, that's what it's been. Luckily, that changed, and we were able to have a really great meeting. And now we're working on reviewing those cases and things of that nature, and being able to provide that support from myself, as well as Dr. Martin, Jody Ratliff personally called as well, to get people understanding that like we are here to help. Like, I have given out my phone number to every single EMT medic in this county. They can call me day and night, anytime they'd like. I appreciate it. If they don't bother, just say hi. But...
I would tell you if I did.
Yeah.
Jody Ratliff, this is the director of the Office of Emergency Medical Services in Charleston. I've been doing this 20 years, and I've never received a call from that office like that, just because she reached out and they discussed it. And Jody reached out to, to this young paramedic to reassure her that, you know, the state of West Virginia is here for you to, to make things better and to help you. And that's, that wasn't available to us. You know, we learned hard way a lot growing up as, as well as even as paramedics. And just that there is, the, the change of the mindset and the environment that we operate in in the last, since July 1st, has been amazing. And she, she's just got a whole list of where she wants to go.
Yeah, and I think what's important about that is that this job is really hard. People see a lot of things that nobody really should ever have to see. And if you don't support it in that environment, catastrophic consequences happen. We actually just had a, a medic recently down south who committed suicide because they felt unsupported. And to me, that's just unacceptable for us to allow things like that to happen, because our people don't feel like they have somebody to have their back when things don't always go as planned. So I don't ever want that to happen in Mineral County. As long as I'm working here, I want people to know that I will always answer the phone if they need me or need guidance, as well as having Dr. Martin, he's available, Dr. Shider, Dr. Shukis. Because with me, it doesn't just come myself, it comes the whole division of EMS from WVU, which is a really huge resource for everybody. So that's another thing that I think is extremely important that we need to provide to Mineral County. Another thing I'd really like to do, and I'm working on this already, is be a liaison to PBH. Potomac Valley, small, quiet, little patients, volume is no longer. Potomac Valley is busy. They are providing exemplary care. The physicians that I work with there are excellent. And that's what we strive to be. I always say to people, I don't accept mediocrity. I want to be excellent. And so I would love to be a continued liaison to Potomac Valley. I work very closely with Jason Willer, the nurse manager in the emergency department there, as well as personally continue to pick up time working in Potomac on shifts so that I can stay in, in tune with the nursing. And because the interface between pre-hospital and nursing is, is very, very interconnected as well. So we need to have good working relationships all around. So that's another thing that I would really like to continue. And I, despite the fact that I work in Morgantown, I, I don't, that's not included in my clinical time. I still have to do all my shifts in Morgantown. Anything I think about Potomac is extra. And that's just because I choose to, not because I have to. So I do that so that I can stay involved. The biggest thing for me is continuing education. So I spent an extra year after residency doing a medical education admin leadership fellowship. So I deep dived into how, how to best educate different levels of providers, whether that be pre-hospital, med student, resident, et cetera. How to navigate the difficult learning experience, how to navigate remediation for somebody who may not know their protocols, et cetera, things like that. And I love to teach. I will teach all day, and I have a yes problem where I might be wanting to go home, and if someone said to me, "Dr. Kerros, can you show me how to sew or suture that?", I would sit down and do it, because I think it's unbelievably important to, like, provide that further knowledge to people if I have it. And if sometimes I say, "I don't know", they'll ask a question, and there's times where I'm like, "I don't know, but I'll find out." And I'll do my own research, because I'm not perfect, and I still learn every single day. We're already initiating this, actually, on January 3rd and 4th. We're running a huge educational session where I have requested Jen Landis from Health Net, as well as Adam Hoffman, Sim Extraordinaire, I like to call him, from WVU Medicine. And they're bringing trucks down and simulations, and we're coming and running a huge session on the 3rd and the 4th at New Creek and Short Cap for all of our, our medics and EMTs in the county to come in and learn some pretty cool things. So I like to present things that I call high fidelity, meaning very important, you can't miss them, cases, but low frequency, meaning they don't happen a lot. So you may not see this all the time. However, when you do, you need to know what to do. You need to know how to take care of it. So we're going to present four different stations where we get to go through, and I get to teach, and we get to learn. And some of it's a little bit further than what we do right now, so like ultrasound in the field. But the more you engage people, the more we're going to have buy-in to do those kinds of things as well in the future. Something that I know is important to Mineral County, being with the opioid epidemic committee, is field opioid endeavors. I know there are already a couple of things with, like, such as Narcan administration education to the layperson that's occurring. I would love to continue to spearhead that further. And, and I'd be happy with, you know, I know we do blood drives and such, like running programs like that out of our, our volunteer stations and things like that. I think we can continue to further that education. I think that we could petition further statewide for more readily available Narcan resources, because I know, just speaking with my agencies, such as Elk Garden, is having difficulty sometimes obtaining things like Narcan, because it's expensive, but trying to find grants or, or further money to do, to do that and get those more readily available. The other thing that I have through WVU is a lot of resources with the addiction medicine team. Specifically, one of my good colleagues, Anna Barclay, she did emergency medicine with myself, but then she went on to do a fellowship, an extra year in addiction medicine specifically. So engaging her and figuring out if there's any additional resources from, from her standpoint that she feels would be beneficial to our community in particular, because she is an expert on this. And I think asking for her help and assistance would be great.
To date, if you count today's, 63 overdoses in Mineral County that we got called for, you know, probably double that we didn't call for, who knows how many. The medical examiner says we average one, one-plus-ish death a month from, from opioid use. So it's, it's out there.
Yeah, and it's, it's sad, because it's, it is a disease, just like if I were to treat someone's diabetes, it is, it is also, their brain chemistry completely changes, and it's very difficult to overcome that. So any additional resources that we could provide would be helpful. Something else that this is not, this has not been presented anywhere, but I, so I'm originally from New Jersey, and I trained my medical school training in Camden, which is a rather frightening place in terms of crime. It also has a serious addiction problem. And what they initiated down there is what's called an in-field MATT therapy program. So what that is, is that they, actually, when they go on an overdose call, if they give someone Narcan and they wake up, they talk to them about starting something like Suboxone, which is a medication that's used to treat addiction in that moment, and they're able to provide that medicine first dose then, and help set them up in a Suboxone clinic within the next two days. I don't know if that would be a possibility here. It would be something that I would have to speak with our division about, as well as probably our addiction medicine team, because you have to have a specific clinic that they can go to. You can't just say, "Yeah, here's a dose. Good luck", right? That's not the point. It'd have to be setting something up for future. But I always thought about possibly initiating that as well. Yeah, like a, like a pilot program here. So that would be something in, you know, and that would take a couple of years, obviously, like...
Then there's a couple of people on the committee that are, that deal with, with that kind of thing, so maybe they can help out with that, too.
Yeah. But that would be something else that we could at least look into and propose and see, see what the, the opportunities are for that. And I do have connections still back at Cooper where I was from, where they're doing this. So to, if it were to be a pilot in the future, that would be something that I could also help with.
Okay.
So ultimately, in terms of compensation, we're pretty much, we're pretty much starting from the ground up with Mineral County's medical direction. I, I really am starting from level zero, because I don't think anybody did anything prior to, to that for our actual medics. So compensation models, there's a few. Dr. Jimmy Shider helped assist me with this from, from looking at comparative structures in North Carolina Wake Forest. That's where we train. That's the most recent up-to-date information I have. There's hourly models and call volume models. Ultimately, they come out to be pretty equivalent in overall pricing. The call volume model includes a, like, a flux which goes to WVU Medicine. It's almost like a tax, but it's not. So it ultimately ends up being fairly similar. It's a fringe cost. So I, the hourly model is what, what he is utilizing through Harrison County and what Dr. Shukis utilizes through Mon County. So that's the one that I thought would likely be best to talk about. I listed them on here based on what my clinically, clinical hour time is under the hourly model and what it would come out to give or take over projected annual compensation. And I also on the next page put comparably what the national landscape looks like for EMS, which is a broad array. Some of these people are getting paid absurd amounts of money, like upwards of $200,000. And you hear that it's not what I'm asking for. Please don't think I am. That is absolutely not even comparable or close to what I want or am asking for. Really, all I want is so that I can take some of my shifts away in my clinical time, so I can spend it here instead. That is what I, I don't, I'm not looking for monetary compensation for myself, just time. So to do that, I was proposing 25 to 30 hours a month, which in reality would be more, because I could coincide them with my Potomac Valley shifts that I work down here, where I may be working, so for instance, I'm working Monday at Potomac Valley during the daytime. So I'm coming here on Sunday afternoon. I plan to spend time with Kaiser EMS Agency, where we're reviewing some, some scheduling things and trialing a new type of schedule. So I'll be here Sunday during the afternoon, stay overnight, work my shift. And then on, I'm done with my shift Monday, Tuesday, instead of going directly home, I'm going to spend time riding on the chase car with Valley so that I can be out in the community and that people can see me in the community. I want to be a community liaison. I want people to say, "Hey, that's Dr. Kerros, and we know who she is." I don't want to just be a name on a piece of paper. And it's funny when people call me Dr. Kirby, because then I know they know who I am, because that's my, I just go by Kirby. Everyone says I have to call myself Dr. Kerros, but that's not who I am. My name is Kirby, and you can call me Kirby, and that's just fine.
And you have to call her Dr. Kerros, it's because you're not having a fun conversation with Dr. Kirby.
Correct. If I'm Dr. Kerros, it means that we're having a very serious discussion. There may have been a Dr. Kerros conversation as of late. With that said, though, so, so I want people, like, I, I do tell them, I say, "You can call me Kirby", and some of them won't, and they'll still call me Dr. Kirby at least. But I, I do, because while I am their boss, I also want to be a peer and a colleague, and they're teaching me, right? I, residents and doctors do not learn how to put in regular IVs. We learn big IVs and ultrasound and all this fancy stuff for, like, very sick people, but no one teaches us how to put a simple, regular IV. You should have seen me two weeks ago attempting to do so. It was rather embarrassing. So instead, I recruited the 22-year-old EMTs to help. And it was really funny, when one of them looked at me and said, "I don't think I'm qualified to teach you anything", and I said, "That is absolutely untrue." And now I ran my first call a couple of days ago, and I was by myself, and I put an IV in, and I successfully put that IV in. But I'm going to, I'm going to give credit to that, to these, these EMTs who are teaching me also, so I'm still learning, right? And I ask that with all of this, that you guys give me some grace as well, because I'm, I'm fairly new to being a medical director, but I'm willing to put in the work to learn.
My first conversation from her first call was, "I was your driver's. We can handle this by ourselves." No, we can't. There's five steps. We can't carry a human being on a stretcher down five steps, just two of us. It doesn't work. I've done it before. It's, it's terrible. Oh, we can do it. No, we can't.
Right, so I'm learning, right? Which is really... Oh, yes, multiple times, yep. I've run several calls. And then I just did my first solo call, though, because we didn't have a medic, and we were going to scratch. So Colby told me I had to get in.
And she, she comes after work, and then goes, and then goes back, and goes back to work, like, there's no... And then in the middle of that, on her days off, she teaches at the university, so she doesn't have any days off or time.
Yeah, so like today, I did interviews for new residents, which is always very fun. And then we had our Valley meeting, and we're here. And then I'll come back Sunday. I'll do work with Kaiser. I'll work Monday at Potomac Valley. I'll ride the chase car Tuesday, and then go home and I work Tuesday night in Morgantown. So that's my, Tuesday through Thursday, so that's my upcoming week. So in taking away, say, that Tuesday night shift in Morgantown, because I have this extra on me, I could stay and probably provide more education that day, right, instead of driving back home to, to have to go to shift. So what I proposed is 25 to 30 hours per month. It'll probably end up being more than that, just because I know who I am as a person, and I, I just enjoy teaching and doing things. So I, I end up just doing things on my own, because I like to as well. And then the compensation I highlighted for that, which comes from my hourly rate at WVU, which has to be given, so it would be paid to the Department of Emergency Medicine, not myself.
That was a question I had. Would we pay you like a salary, or would we pay, we send it to...
Correct. So it would not be a salary to myself. I would not get any of this money compensated towards myself. We would have to create a contract with my boss, Chris Gude, and our financial, I don't even know what Jerry's title is. He's our finance guy. Just go to him, Jerry Kirwin. And we would addend my contract to say, so right now I work 1 FTE or 100%, based on however much the compensation comes out to be. We would be able to addend my contract to say, maybe I'll work 0.7 shifts or 0.6 shifts, whatever, whatever that would equate to. And that would be added, and then it would be paid directly to the Department of Emergency Medicine. And then I would just be compensated in my time. So that's how that would work. Ultimately, I think that in doing this, we could offer specialized services and better clinical skills for Mineral County that has, is unprecedented here. And I really want to look forward to continuing to grow pre-hospital services here in this community, which although I've only been around for a short period of time, I feel like I've become a part of, at least I want to be a part of.
We have something special here. There are counties around us that are struggling with two million-dollar budgets, and they can't do what we do. And they, they lay, the new employees are getting laid off. We're mostly volunteer. We do have some employees that are working in departments. We do a paper call incentive, and that helps get people out, especially younger people to run a little bit, people who are not established in careers and whatnot, people who just need extra money, and it gets the ambulances out. But I can tell you, the landscape of EMS in Mineral County in this state has changed over 20 years. And we can be following the leader, or we can be somebody who's branching out and being a landmark for where people go to to learn how things should be done, right? And I would rather be that.
The leader, yeah.
My, 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 my request to you guys would always remain the same. We need as much time as we can afford with her in this county, training, and working toward what we can do to better for all citizens every day of the week. And, you know, I, I think that in the, it's that $80,000 ballpark is where we need to be, which is right at the center of where she and her hourly range is. And if we can get funding for the first year to get the program going, I'll fund it after that. You know, yeah, we'll have to look at money down the road and how things go, but I'll fund it after that. I need help.
Or at least put forth the efforts to fund proportionally, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get the funding. But we'll, we don't, don't worry about the funding after the first year. I, I'll get it. You know, I'm pretty persistent. It's, I'll find a way, guys.
I just want to thank you guys for listening to me talk about all of that very exhausting stress. No, but seriously, it's a lot. So I do thank you very much for calling this meeting out of, out of our normal, normal turn as well.
I think Lauren wanted to say that.
Yeah. So if you wind the clock back seven years ago, I know everybody had some trepidation about starting a chase car program, but we have seen time and time again how successful that has become and what a difference that's made for the 28,000 people that live here. Can you imagine taking that and putting a physician out in the community? And I'm just going to give you, for instance, a couple of weeks ago, she was with me. We had a pretty sick child that I wouldn't have been able to treat the way she could treat, and that made a huge difference. And, you know, we talk about money and expenditures, and this would be by far the best, best money you all have ever spent. And that's coming from a frontline paramedic. So I would just ask you... So I would just ask you really strongly to consider this and what it would do for our community and to put Mineral County. On the map in terms of what we can do and what we can provide, and I mean. Leadership starts at the top and it doesn't get any better, and she's proven that, she's done more in three months than we've had thirty years, so. That's just what I would say.
So when you, when would you be thinking about starting this program?
Her schedule would depend on that because they wrote her first quarter schedule for.
So, yeah, so I already have my schedule for, uh, the next. Three months through March, so we have not made April, made June, that's the last quarter. Well, technically second quarter.
So we'll be looking at March.
April, first of April, probably.
Uh, January, February, March, yes, the first of April.
Um, and, and another thing we're gonna do, that we already discussed, if, if we can get this off the ground. We own two chase vehicles in this county right now, one's getting taken care of and getting set up to go, once it's on the street, the other one at the backup. The ambulance has already, has already, you know, uh, we're not getting rid of it, so why not? Let her use it for Mineral County physicians vehicle, it would be staff. Stopped and set up for her to be able to go and do whatever, you know, she gonna get in that and she's down here and she gonna go. She gonna have her plans, she's gonna know where she's going, and if she.
I'm learning the tech radio channels.
If she's at, yeah, she talked on the radio the other day. The, um, the, yeah. Oh, okay. Absolutely.
And also what I didn't, I failed to mention as well is that. We are starting a full fellowship through EMS for WVU, um. That means that every year we will have two doctors who are spending extra training time to become EMS physicians. And we will be basing them out of Potomac Valley Hospital. Because we think, yes, that is the plan. With that said, if we have this opportunity, they come with me. So I can have them come down and if I can't be there that day, but I say, hey, you're working at Potomac Valley Monday in the, in the ER Tuesday. You're going and you're riding that chase car and I want you to take two, uh, an E, EMT and a medic with you. And now they're going to be able to help teach our prehospital providers and learn. From them as well as assist me in anything that I may have asked of them in terms of administrative tasks or whatnot. Um, being a part of, you know, meetings, looking at QA, QI, speaking with any providers or providing support for somebody who might be there. So we also will have TAC coming with us as well.
And, and, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's hard for me to come ask for this money, I haven't asked you guys for any money from the county commission.
I'm gonna say, it's, it's not hard to ask, but I haven't asked for money in a long time and. The, the, next door, they're bumping up their budget for EMS to two million dollars a year. My budget's two hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars a year, starting in January.
You're talking about the chase cars, you know, when it, when it come on, Lauren, you remember, we had a lot of opposition.
Correct, I heard, yes.
And one of the ladies who was strongly opposed to that. Made the comment to me when her husband was sick.
And required the chase car?
She said, I was never so happy in my life when I seen that pretty blue vehicle pull my driveway.
I think we're all doing what.
That is an invaluable resource for this county. And to get a second one is, is unheard of, unheard of, unprecedented.
Third day, I think the third day, the chase car was on the job, I think, uh, I think Lauren was ri- writing that, say someone's like. Say someone's like.
Yeah, yeah.
Well invested.
Well, I agree, I absolutely agree.
Remember all, not even one.
Yeah.
Well, you know what, changes, changes really hard, right?
And it was, there was some proprietary and, and, you know, things that I couldn't have all of my help in there. There were a lot of times I stood by, by Steve or, or by Roger and had to go around. Building by building and take a beating every, every Monday.
Well, that's what, that's what, change, change is hard and I am putting forth a lot of change. And upcoming, I'm going to be putting forth even more change, uh, you know, I'm gonna, we're gonna talk at ambulance authority meetings about. You know, call volume for providers and what is up to date on things and I. I know that's, that's really difficult for people, but the goal, my goal. Unfortunately, not everybody might like me, I'm doing my best. But my ultimate goal is to take care of the people in the community of Mineral County and provide excellent care. And I don't settle for anything below that. So if, if change needs to occur so that we can do that, then that's what we do.
Okay, so I have two questions.
Yes, sir.
Uh, first one is, and I, and once you get to know me, you'll realize I'm a, I'm do the worst-case scenario guy. So I'm a worst-case scenario type guy, so now we're, we're up in our, you're basically, you wanna come in and know up our services, uh, what. The EMP paramedics can do, uh, with that increase of services also comes an increase in liability. The word is that liability.
So my liability for, for myself is completely covered under the entity of WVU Division of Emergency Medicine.
Okay.
Fully covered, anyone who runs under my license therefore would also be, be covered, if I'm covered, I cover the umbrella. So they also do, each agency I know has some liability as well, on top of that for themselves. But my liability is completely covered by my regular WV medicine contract.
Every agency in this county should have a three-million-dollar policy. For medical liability with a one million per occurrence and a one million dollar uh, umbrella policy, it, it's, we have, we carry. All of us pay probably forty thousand plus a year insurance, every agency does, and, and insurance premiums just for liability.
And so what happens is if I show up on a scene, if I'm just observing, nothing happens, right? But if I show up and I take part in the scene, it becomes what's called a class zero, meaning that I am allowed to perform all activities under the scope of my training. That means that like Lauren mentioned, I can give medicines and do things that medics cannot. So that child would have died, that child would have not been able to breathe in the back of the ambulance on the way to Cumberland and would have died. Had we not given medicine called Resemic Epi that they breathe in. When I gave that order to Lauren, she specifically said to me, that's not in my protocol.
And she made it.
But I am the protocol. So I'm.
You've already helped save one, right?
Well, I don't see it as that, I did my job to the best of my ability that day, is what I did.
But when the rev needs to, you help save one.
If, if that's how you say that, then that's how it is, but I just did my job to the best of my ability, so. It becomes a class zero and then my liability coverage from WV takes over. Every time I do that, I do a chart, so they chart and then I chart as well. So I don't just leave, I have to document just like I would if I had a resident in the ER.
Our insurance, because there's, it, it's a clause and I can't think of the name of it, but we welcome her onto our ambulance. You know, she had this medical director and the moment that one of our crew members says, yes, please help us. She's fully covered by not only our medical liability insurance, but our workers' comp insurance as well. And our workers' comp insurance with, eh, every working, workers' comp insurance in the county is set to pay one hundred percent of your working wage. We had that discussion because she didn't think that was right, but I've checked into it and.
Yeah, I wanted to clarify all of that as well, I had the same question as you did. I actually called Dr. Martin, um, the night after I had that call, that patient. And specifically was like, I need to know exactly what I am able to do, and he said. I have to function as the scope of my practice, else it's negligence. So if I didn't treat that child, it would have been negligence, I would have been sued for negligence, and that's all covered, so yes, great question.
Then the other question I have, which relates to the opioid side of things and where the funding's gonna go, because we have to do some reporting to that. We had to, and basically just kind of show that there is some kind of return on investment. Uh, and that question actually came from Missy, I've seen it pop up there, Missy, but I didn't, I, I think I read it all, but. But anyway, how would we, would we be able to, to? Get some kind of a reporting that, you know, we were able to save this many people, where we were able to help. Uh, these overdose victims and that kind of thing.
We'd have to justify the opioid spending.
Yeah, so.
Going towards the.
I think it would depend first on what, what we're putting out, like which. Which opportunities, which procedures, if we wanna like, if we wanna run full further, you know. Late person, Narcan administration training, things of that nature, what I think we would do is we would run the training and then subsequently following that. We would have to look at a period of time of our, of our opiate overdoses, which I hope are not. You know, I, I don't want that to happen, but we would have to track them, which we can easily do because we have to create. Anytime we have one, we chart, right? So we would say, you know, whether Narcan was administered by somebody on scene, whether it was administered by the police department, whether it was administered by us, et cetera. And we could, I mean, we could run a report and track all of those things, and then from there we would just look at morbidity and mortality, who. Who was able to be recovered and saved, who unfortunately passed away, et cetera. Uh, so yes, we can get those numbers, we would just have to be vigilant about keeping them, but if I put forth that anytime there's an, an overdose. That that chart gets immediately sent to me. Then I can just keep track of that and we can also, I mean, I think I, I really would help administratively wise.
And we would record the other thing you mentioned, that M, that M program.
So we have to work on initiating that, so that's not here, that's not in West Virginia, that is in my home, hometown state.
You wanna bring it here, right?
I think it would be great to do, but I'm gonna have to propose that to the Division of EMS, Dr. Martin, Dr. Shider, Dr. Shukis.
I think would be a great spot for a pilot for that, I mean.
Yes, and then we'd also have to have people, so everyone would have to be. Trained on initiation of Suboxone therapy, all of our medics.
Okay.
And that would be, that's a pretty large endeavor. Realistically, I don't think we can do that right now while simultaneously doing the blood. And doing the intubation, it would have to come stepwise, serially, because it's just, doing that all at once is just not feasible. Monetarily or time for education, our medics won't be able to go through all that training at once.
If you go down the medical road.
Yes, I would love to do that.
And, and I would tell you, if you go down the medical road, the RSI. For a patient that's overdosed and it, it, it is very combative and, and fighting to hurt theirself or something like that, that innovation saves life because.
Yeah, actually, that would be able to be proposed as, as utilizing that funding as well. I didn't even think of that.
Because when you, when you.
Protecting their airway when they need, yes, that's huge.
Paramedics do it, but they cannot do, if they do something. And overdose patients do a lot of things that, that a normal person wouldn't do and they can't help it because they're not, they're not thinking of it. But if they do something to severely hurt theirself. Or are going to, or they're fighting and they're, they're a danger to us, there's a protocol to go down the road to. Uh, you know, she can write and, and help and.
Yeah, we can, I wanna initiate our side as soon as possible.
To protect their airway when they can't.
Mm-hmm, and we can get that, we already have that program running in multiple counties in the state. We actually, Lauren went down to, what's a, it's Pipestem, it's a, the conference that, um, National EMS runs. And she has already gone through the training along with several of our other medics, so we can certainly get that going. And that was actually discussed today at a meeting with Craig Barrett, um, and myself and Dr. Shidler to initiate as well, very soon. The only caveat with that unfortunately is that I am not the medical director of Valley Health.
Right.
And it would have to be run under my license. And that's the discussion that's being held.
About Valley Health is, is over the chase car, even though we contracted base supply of the medics, so they're under their.
And the chase car would be where this would have to come through.
Okay.
Because unfortunately, it's just probably not feasible to get it at all nine agencies.
You could do it at one of the north lines south though, you, you could have central help on, north and short gap would take that leap. I guarantee you that, to, to, or something like that.
Yeah.
I mean, speaking for short.
We have to talk about it, but the chase car would really be the ultimate place to perform that.
Yeah, 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 I think it would.
Cause they also would be the place for blood products.
Yes, okay, but there's like.
But we can get that running, I mean, as, as soon as I want it, if I have the ability to. Work with Valley. Um, because unfortunately, it's really confusing when. The medics are under my purview and my medical license most of the time, but on that chase car technically they're under Dr. Vess. And that's, that's a problem, because Dr. Vess doesn't want to be liable for those things, which I understand because he's not. An emergency medicine physician. Right, he's an excellent internist, that's what his job, like, he does his job amazingly, but we just have different jobs.
Okay.
So yeah, I would love to do that. Be excellent.
Any other questions? Um, I, I plan on going back to your committee meeting. Yeah. Yeah, somewhere, I will, we, once we do review the update a little bit, I just appreciate it.
I know, I know.
So, do you have anything? Do you have any questions, Steve? You have any questions?
I have none.
Rick, any questions?
Later on, I'd like to, um, let me add to this if I could. Colby and I have been chatting a little bit, um, this would be helpful, you can help me as well inform me. So I have set up a meeting Tuesday morning. Uh, down in Charleston with, um. This, this calendar won't tell me, chairman for fire and EMS. Um, not Travis Mahollan, Dan. Something else that doesn't show up on the calendar, but he's from WVU. With the, uh, medical government affairs, et cetera, so he'll be there as well. We wanna talk specifically about this, so let, let me get.
About which, uh, the whole thing?
Buyback, buy down program there, so, uh, whatever we can do to help understand that a little bit. Uh, that would be helpful to me.
Okay, thank you, Liz, do you have any questions?
Um, if I could just get a card.
A card?
Or whatever.
I'll give you my contact, I don't have a card, I don't think I'm that fancy. I do not. I will give you my contact information already down to you.
Actually, I'm.
Guess I should get carders. Sorry, I'll work on that.
Yeah.
Put that on the to-do list, add it to the list.
Yes.
I do have one additional question, we keep talking about. We are talking hours and not talking money and on, 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 but is there actually a financial, um. Um, component that goes to the county that would be required to help get this going? That you're not already covering.
Well, what, what this meeting is about is to, um. Hopefully get some of the opioid funding that the opioid committee is in charge of.
Okay.
To get the program started, operated for a year. And then after that, then we'll look to seek funding from other sources.
Thank you.
Yeah, it would be looking to the annual.
To get it off the ground, using opioid funding. Yeah, and any funding the state would offer would really be, well, that's part of what I need to bring to the conversation on Tuesday if we wanna try to expand the idea.
That's right.
Possibly, yeah, possibly.
And this, this is, so the vast majority of counties provide their medical directors with. Monetary sources for buy-down time, um, so, uh, like, so Mon General, for instance, is, is giving Dr. Shukis time and. Um, Harrison. And that's so that they can be present and do these things, cause it's really, I mean, I'm, I'm working two jobs right now. Full-time jobs, basically, um, and it's just hard and I continue to do it and I'll be happy to do it, but this would just give me more opportunity here.
Yeah, unlimited hours left out there.
Yeah, you'd think that I had, I, I sleep a little bit. Just a little.
Any other questions?
No, sir, I'm only thirty-two, I'm rocking.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, thank you guys so very much, I appreciate all your time.
Meeting with us.
Yeah.
Appreciate this and I'm excited.
Yeah, I really appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, so much for listening to all of that, that was a lot of girl, I definitely appreciate it.
Yeah, she should have a hand, there's somewhere.
She said I was.
I can email, yeah, there's, there's, there's actions.
Katie, do you have any questions?
The schedule's a little wild right now.
We're always like.
Well, and.
Tell you what, I think, like, this is well and better.
What's that?
Very medical, I have a doctor, I think that'd be good.
Well. You might end up having myself as well as two fellow physicians.